Twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen work session for the Board of Mayor and Alderman to order. As is our tradition, we invite citizen comments that are not on the agenda, and that is the next item on the agenda for an opportunity for citizens to speak on items that are not on the agenda. And Ms. Hickerson, if you want to come up and sit down and tell us who's with you and why you're here, we'll give you a couple of minutes to speak.
Thank you for letting me know.
People laugh at me when I say a couple of minutes, but...
Oh, I understand. I'm just so elated and excited about being here and this opportunity. First of all, my name is Evelyn Hickerson, and I am the founder of Gentry's Educational Foundation. And I am here once again to say thank you, thank you, thank you for partnering with our entity where as we are still providing intense tutoring, science, reading, and math for children. I am not going to speak very long today because I wanted some proof as to what we're doing. So I brought some delightful parents so that you can hear, and you won't have to just hear it from me. So I'm going to get them to introduce themselves, but I can never thank you enough. We are getting ready to open New Hope Academy in the fall, and we will be in their after-school program to help enhance also the tutorial services for the children there that's on scholarships.
Good evening. My name is Talia Mays. My son attends Johnson Elementary. He attended second and third grade there. When he was attending, when he first began second grade, his score, his reading scores were evaluated, and at the time, he scored a one twenty-seven out of five hundred, which is very embarrassing as parent, feels like you failed. Ms. Hickerson quickly recognized that he would benefit from the Gentry's program, and at the time, I was not in a financial position that I could afford a tutoring program, and she gave us a scholarship. And my son, within three months, his scores increased to over three hundred out of five hundred. And by the end, when he finished his second grade year, he was scoring four hundred and thirty-eight out of five hundred. And I want to say that it was the bridging of the gap, you know, because it was, I was helping him, and then once I realized his needs, and the school was obviously doing a wonderful job as well, but they couldn't do it all in that allotted time. We needed just a little bit more from, you know, a little bit more structure and one-on-one. My son also has deficit in areas where he needs things repeated multiple times, and sometimes it needs to be repeated in a, or said in a certain manner, and then he clicks for him. So with that being said, he, you know, he, just they gave him what he needed. Third grade, he received two academic awards for his achievements as well, and again, that was, I think, because of the bridging of the gap with the Gentry's program. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Brian Myers, and my daughter is four years old, and she attends Johnson Elementary. And she is hearing impaired and has bilateral cochlear implants, and she needs a little extra attention at school as well as after school. And when Ms. Hickerson introduced me last year to the Gentry's Foundation, light just went off in my, in my head, just that, oh my goodness, she is, my daughter's going to be able to get a little extra attention and tutoring and time. But my, my time there and my daughter's time there has been tenfold of what I've expected. One of their longtime teachers there, Ms. Sue, has just loved and cherished my daughter, helped my, helped the rest of the class, the, the young students at Gentry's, learn integrated sign language and, and speech therapy to help my daughter really just start to blossom and catch up to some of the rest of her classmates. And I'm just really grateful for some of the young individuals, young adults that are employed by Gentry as well. I think a friend of ours, a young twenty-year-old who just loves students, loves children, and is able to be in that setting, helping nurture and, and teach my daughter and, and help her along as an assistant to, to Ms. Sue, it's just been such a blessing and wonderful experience to know that my daughter is in great care and that academics and social advancement is at the forefront and is very important to all children, even if there are disadvantages or setbacks. So, I'm very grateful for Gentry's.
Thank you all so much. And I'm glad you could bring the other ten here.
Thank you. It's good to hear that good report. So we'll move on to item number one, which is a discussion of a possible ordinance restricting the retail sale of dogs and cats referred for further discussion from February thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. And what I'd like to do, if it's okay with the board, we have a number of people that want to speak on this issue, and I'm just going to go ahead and ask them to speak to the board as we consider this. So if you plan on speaking on item number one, I would ask you to kind of position yourself. You're welcome to use the podium, you're welcome to come up and sit down. So the first on the list is Dr. Kathy Lewis, followed by Ashley Cunningham, and we'll limit you to two minutes.
Sorry, I prepared a little something because public speaking's not my favorite thing. I like to talk to animals a little bit more, but I, I will introduce myself. My name's Kathy Lewis. I am a veterinarian at Animalia Health and Wellness in Franklin, and this ordinance is very important to me, not only as a veterinarian, but also as someone who was born and raised in Franklin. When I became a vet in two thousand and two, I did take an oath to protect animal health and prevent animal suffering. And I think that the issue here is, all of us probably would agree that commercial breeding facilities, AKA puppy mills, are large inhumane breeding operations that do nothing to protect animal health. And they have become synonymous with the term, the, the sufferings become synonymous with the term puppy mills. These places often keep dozens and many times hundreds of breeding dogs in small stacked wire cages for their entire lives with little or no exercise, no veterinary care or human attention, and they're, or they're solely to pump out puppies for the pet trade. As a result, the puppies from these commercial breeding facilities are statistically more likely to have genetic abnormalities as well as serious ongoing health and behavioral problems. The reason this ordinance is so important is the fact that despite what they say, pet stores do sell puppies from puppy mills. Truly responsible breeders do not want to sell their puppies to pet stores. They want to meet their buyers personally and, and just don't want to sell puppies to the first person that shows up with cash in hand. More than three hundred and fifty cities, including Nashville, have passed similar bans, and puppy mills are finding it more difficult to secure buyers. Eliminating the commercial pet sales within local jurisdictions lessens the overall national demand for puppy mill puppies and has already begun to reduce the number of active puppy mills across the country. A ban on the sale of puppy mill puppies has also been shown to lower the euthanasia rates of dogs and cats in the shelters of the cities that have these ordinances in place. It has been said that when you know better, you do better, and I truly believe that the people of Franklin know better, and it's time for this city to do better. Thanks.
Ms. Cunningham, followed by Sean Aswad.
Mr. Mayor.
Followed by Dani Mangiogli.
Mr. Mayor, just for time's sake, you know, it would be probably best if people don't clap, so we can, for time's sake.
I tried to ignore it.
Yeah, well, it's, it's actually better for time's sake because we really do want to hear from everybody, all right? Thank you.
Hello, my name is, can you all hear me? Hello, my name is Ashley Cunningham, and I have been a Franklin resident for six years. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you here tonight on this very important issue. As you may remember, when I spoke at a February work session, I discussed three primary concerns behind the need for this ordinance: public health, animal welfare, and consumer protection. These three issues have one common denominator, the sourcing of the dogs, which are often mass commercial breeding kennels, also known as puppy mills. Tonight, I'd also like to address some questions I've received from the board over the last few weeks. First is the spread of disease. This is an industry that has made people sick, including two at a Knoxville pet store just last year. They opened last spring, and by fall, two people had contracted Campylobacter from puppies purchased at the store. The CDC traced one hundred and thirteen cases of Campylobacter back to the Petland Stores across the country. I bring up Petland because this is a national pet store chain who said in public testimony before the Tennessee Legislature that they would like to open a store in Middle Tennessee. In response to that statement, last month, Nashville became the first city in Tennessee to pass an ordinance almost identical to the one being considered here. With Nashville Metro out of the picture and Petland puppies selling for up to five thousand dollars, they'll be looking for another affluent community to land, and Franklin is the most obvious choice. A few aldermen have asked whether this issue is or should be regulated by the state or federal government. Because of weak standards or complete lack of regulation on the federal and state level, more than two hundred and fifty cities have found it necessary to restrict pet store sales. As for federal oversight, the USDA inspects commercial breeders who sell to pet stores. Some pet stores like to claim that because they are selling from USDA licensed breeders, they are not sourcing from puppy mills or only supporting responsible breeders. But the USDA explains on its website's Frequently Asked Questions page that, quote, "We do not certify establishments," end quote, "A USDA license is not a seal of approval." The USDA has repeatedly asserted that their regulations and standards are minimum requirements that should be built upon by state and local governments. Can I just close quickly?
Sure.
I want to close by saying that I'm not opposed to the purchase of purebred dogs. There is a large network of responsible breeders in this area who will continue to sell puppies. They place their dogs' well-being above all else and only sell to those whom they meet in person. I'm asking you tonight to protect animals and residents of the city of Franklin by cutting off the puppy mill pet store pipeline. Thank you very much.
Hi, I am Sean South Aswad. I have lived here my whole life, came back here to raise my kids. I run Snooty Giggles Dog Rescue, which is a special needs, mostly dog rescue. We take on extreme medical cases, extreme seniors, hospice, special needs of all sorts. We have been working raids for puppy mills and backyard breeders for years now, so I know firsthand where these dogs are coming from and the conditions that they live in. And though you may see a puppy that looks happy and healthy in a pet store, generally speaking, there's, there's, there are hidden things that you, that you can't see, and that the owners who purchase them don't find out until weeks and, you know, past. Recently, we have gotten several calls in the past year asking for help with dogs that have been purchased from pet stores who, you know, they didn't realize were blind or deaf, had liver shunts, varying, varying birth defects, and people purchase them, and then they can't afford to take care of them and their vet bills, so they reach out to us for help. Going to, even just two and a half weeks ago, we went, we had in Mount Pleasant, there was a backyard breeding situation. These people sell to pet stores and, like, openly admitting they sell to pet stores. That's where their income comes from. This had obviously been a huge operation at one time. When we came in, there were only eighteen dogs left, living in horrible conditions in a barn with no airflow, in cages they hadn't been out of, newborn babies on the ground in the dirt with mamas nowhere to be found that were literally hours old. These puppies are considered designer breeds because they're mutts, because you have, there were, I don't even know where the male was, there was no male to be found. But these dogs were dehydrated, they were sick, full of parasites, in horrible, horrible condition, and those are the puppies that then get passed on. So to support this, we say, you know, we really, we preach so much that we are this progressive, small, southern town with all this charm, and simply supporting puppy mills and backyard breeders, there is nothing charming or progressive about it.
Dani, and next will be Ann Logan, followed by Ann Cox.
Hi, I'm Dani Mangeli. I was a purchaser of a German Shepherd dog from the Poffick Puppy. Within five days of getting him, he, we found out he had Giardia, Coccidia, hookworms, tapeworms, anemia. He was anemic and severely underweight. Now he has, he has a congenital intestinal disease. He has developmental issues in his front, he has hip dysplasia in the back, and he has bile issues as well, or he vomits. I hope that you don't support puppy mills because I, I can say that I, I've seen him go through the worst, and I don't think any other dog should have to go through that. And I don't think any human deserves to see an animal go through that if they don't have to. And I, I just hope the best for all the other dogs and cats out there, and that, that's really all I have to say. He was seventeen hundred dollars, and we've spent thousands upon thousands, he's about to get a CAT scan, that's another thousand dollars to find out everything else, so that's, that's what these people are selling. That, and the proof is in the pudding, so that's, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Logan.
I'm Ann Logan, excuse me, and I wanted to...
You'll speak into the microphone, so we can hear.
We can't hear. We can't hear you.
We're old and deaf.
Like that? Is that better?
Very close to it, yeah, please.
Okay.
Better.
Better? Okay. I wanted to talk to you about a kind of a piece of this puzzle that I had personal experience with. I think what, what we are all talking about, though there are many components to this, is, is the source of dogs and, and what that means to people who acquire them, however they acquire them. In this case, we're talking about when they buy them from a pet store. You all will probably remember that in two thousand and four, in Williamson County, as, as a result of consumer affairs at the state level having received over one hundred thousand dollars in value of complaints, they brought together a whole group of people, including the DA's office and, and child welfare and all kinds of components that were relevant, and had a seizure of the puppies from the Soliski case, which was the name of the case. There were over two hundred dogs, and for, they were both, both breeders and some of them puppies that she had not yet shipped out. She shipped online all over the country to individuals, but pet stores in general get puppies from her same kind of source, which is what we found of these two hundred dogs. Health status, every kind of imaginable issue they had that for nine months, the county spent well in excess of a hundred thousand dollars trying to get through the court case. That doesn't count what the DA's office spent, and that was right here in the city of Franklin. Her home was in the city of Franklin. So we, we don't have to imagine this problem. We lived this problem for nine months of, of, you know, terrible amounts of emotional up and down and the work that goes into, to animals that have not been properly cared for medically or, or socially. These animals, you, we would put them in little kids pools because that was what we were advised to do with, with puppy mill-type puppies, and they would run in circles. That's all they needed to do because that's all the space they were used to was their cage. So they, they literally would not walk forward, they were terrified of everything. That's the kind of source that supplies puppies...
Please go ahead and wind up, please.
Pardon me?
Please go ahead and wind up. Finish.
Finish, wind up, wind up. Okay, okay. That's the kind of source that we are talking about trying to, to, to create an ordinance that would, that would eliminate. So I thank you very much for your interest in this and, and hopefully your protection of, of unwary consumers. Thank you.
Ms. Cox.
Hi, I'm Ann Cox, and excuse my appearance, I'm a volunteer at the Williamson County Animal Center, and I was walking dogs tonight, and I knew about this forum that was going on, but I came across Gina, and I thought, puppy mill dog. I mean, you know, she was found as a stray within the last twenty-four hours, and anybody can tell by looking at her that her, her vaginal area is prolapsed, and that's from having probably ten, fifteen, twenty litters, and you can see from her breasts, I mean, to me, it just epitomizes a puppy mill dog, and it's just not healthy. And I'm a woman, a few words, so I'll just pass around this awful picture to me that's on animal sheltering, and it shows this little dog sitting in a barrel and feces trash, the cage, they defecate and urinate on the dog below them because they're stacked. So I appreciate your time and attention and... Mount Pleasant. No, thank you, Ms. Cox. Thank you. And I'm going to get Gina back to the shelter.
Okay. And we're going to keep your picture since you showed it to be part of the record.
Oh, yes, definitely.
Okay, board, comments?
Oh, that's it?
Yeah, that was all the comments, people wanted to comment.
Um, yeah, I have a comment.
Alderman Berger's the one that brought this.
Sure.
What's the interest of the board as far as having staff dedicate time to creating an ordinance?
Yeah, I'd like to speak to that first.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, got it. Um, you know, this to me is a bigger, bigger picture. We have some issues maybe locally and in our middle Tennessee area, but the reason I've really wanted to sponsor this is because of the bigger picture here, and I'm aware of, of a, of a entity that is looking at middle Tennessee to come in here and wants to be in a fluid area. Is my two minutes up? Sorry.
Hey, that's a new thing in the board.
It's a new way to do it.
I like that.
You caught me on that. But this is about the future of Franklin, and I, I think it is very important that we, that we really look into the future of Franklin and how we want things to go here as far as our animals and how we protect those animals in the future. This is not about putting someone out of business. I don't want to do that. And the more I thought about this ordinance that we can write, if the board will allow us to write and bring forward, that I have an amendment to that, or not even amendment yet, because it's actually not fully written, but if, you will pass this down, I have written up a couple of items here, so that we can truly address my need of saying this is in the future that we need to really be planning for. And, and it would go along the lines in the ordinance of, "Any pet store operating with a valid business license prior to the effect date of this act will be exempt from this section with the following conditions. Any only animal sourced from USDA licensed commercial breeders with no USDA violations shall be offered for sale, barter, or trade. Upon request, the pet store shall provide a copy of the clean USDA inspection report for the breeder of every animal in the pet store, and the pet store has access to these records." Number two, each dog or cat offered for sale, bartered, or traded must list the breeder's name, address, on the front of the enclosure in which the animal is held. Number three, any business found in violation of provision one and two will be subject to a fine of fifty dollars per day. I think that is fair because when you change an ordinance or, or put in an ordinance, sometimes you can have non-conforming uses, and any, any retail sale right now of, of this would become a non-conforming use if we passed an ordinance. So with that said, I'd like to have some precautions put in there that are, one of our local stores, I think, in one of the stories, if I'm not mistaken, had a quote that said, let me read, "We only deal with the best breeds out there that are inspected on a regular basis that have no type of violations of USDA." And if that is true, then, if that is true, then that is...
Excuse me, you're out of order in the audience.
If that is true, then, then they need to adhere to the ordinance that we would write that has that so stated. And then they would also list the breeder's name and address on the front of the enclosure. I've learned a lot through this. I'm a dog lover, had numerous dogs, Irish setters, golden retrievers, labs, mixed dogs. I've learned that the Department of Agriculture Inspection is a simple checklist, they don't check for, or prohibit the importation of dogs from abusive puppy mills, which is what this ordinance is all about. And I learned also that the USDA has repeatedly asserted that their regulations are standard minimum requirements, and they should be built upon by the states and the cities regulating business, and they should exceed those standards. I also learned that the USDA standards allows dogs to be kept in cramped stacked wire cages with only six inches above and around the dog their entire life, and that there's no limit how the dogs can be bred, nor require that the dogs be healthy or free from genetic orders. Some of the stuff I was appalled to learn. We, we have a big problem in this country, this is how we treat our animals. Aside from the US Department of Agriculture checklist, there is no state, this is what got me, no state oversight of pet stores or breeding facilities. State legislatures have been trying, I found out, for five years to pass something, but the rural legislatures have blocked it because, in the agriculture committee. When I found that out, I wondered why. So we really can't wait on the state government to take action in our progressive city of Franklin. To me, if they haven't passed that in five years because of rural legislatures being blocked, blocking it in agriculture committees, then that's playing politics. A few other points I'm going to make, it is my knowledge and understanding that the AKC is not a, not a champ, is not a champion for dogs, as we think. They are sustained by fees of breeders that pay to register puppies. The more dogs, of course, the more money they, the AKC gets to financially be beholden to commercial dog breeding industry. Over the past ten years, the AKC has opposed over two hundred and fifty, I couldn't believe that, common sense bills across the country to protect dogs. They have opposed bills such as only allowing, the opposed bills, only allowing veterinarians to perform surgery on animals, in other words, other people can perform surgeries, lemon laws that protect people from purchasing sick puppies, preventing dogs from being left in hot vehicles, banning the sale of dogs and cat meat, and inhuman, inhumane chaining, chaining. And then I found out through Tennessee and talking to my legislatures that earlier this year, they even opposed a bill in Tennessee that prevents chaining your dog during a hurricane outside. The AKC is the reason, to me, that Tennessee has not been able to pass a bill to regulate breeders. So they are to blame for the cities having to take this action, and so that's what we're doing today. That's why I have agreed to bring this bill, to bring this ordinance, to protect the citizens and the sale of these animals. Um, I just, there's so many more things, but I think you get the picture, and I wanted to share that with you all. I wanted to share that with my board members, and this, um, ordinance would include what I have given you tonight, and, um, there's a few other things here that I, I would just hand out quickly. Um, go ahead and take those, and I'll pass those down. I think I need a few more over here. And, um, to wrap this up, I would just say that, here, I think I have that one. Uh, there's just a few things I wanna hand out to you that I just read, so that, that what I just talked about is included on that sheet. So, I'll just wrap that up. I thank you all. I see all the, um, green circles, so I, we have a lot of people here tonight, and again, I wanna, I wanna say, I'm not trying, with this effort on my part, I don't, I can't speak for all of you, but on my part, it's not about putting someone out of business. So, I've been cautious about that and have added this to the language. This is about the future. This is about not allowing retail sales that, that promote puppy mills, because that's where a lot of the, the majority of these dogs come from. This is about the future to me and about establishing that for Franklin, and we became very friendly to our dogs and animals. If you go down Main Street all around our town, it says, "Bring your dogs, bring your dogs." Well, it's about time we protect the dogs and also step up for the consumer, uh, for the future in Franklin, and that was my comments. Thank you.
Alderman Blain.
Um, I was pleased there's may say that somebody had said they didn't know if we felt it was our place, and I was one of the people that said that when this first came out. But what I've learned, and I appreciate all your research, I did not go that far, I did talk to some people, but what I feel like at the end of the day is if there was something set in place that regulated this, that took care of the expectation, that made sure the animals were treated well, we wouldn't be here right now. So, void of that, which is why we are talking about this, um, to see the evidence of the animals and how they're treated, and we are blessed to have a wonderful, um, animal shelter. I got one dog from there. We have lots of other wonderful rescue entities, I have lots of great dog advocate friends, and I'm looking at several of them. I feel like you took what mirrored Davidson County's ordinance pretty much verbatim. There was a discrepancy between whether it was a misdemeanor or a civil...
Right.
...penalty, which I'd like some clarification on which one of those we wanna go down. I would rather see this be presented to us for a vote as it stands, and you make an addendum or an amendment to add this, because I can't support this page that you just brought us, because to me, it negates the whole reason why we're even discussing this, because the, the, and, and I'm not trying to at all help so, hurt somebody's, um, income or their business, but again, we wouldn't be here if we didn't have an example of why we're here. So, that's, to me, is the problem. So, uh, to the rest of the board, and now we don't have a full board tonight, and I know it's not on the voting agenda, I would prefer to mirror the ordinance that Metro passed successfully, which to me was groundbreaking. It gives us something to go on, to say that it is actually our purview to be able to regulate this, um, and then if you feel so led to change that language, to add this, that they still can sell puppies as long as they met this criteria, we'll decide that when we have the full board.
I'm good with that.
That's my opinion, so.
Thank you, Brandon.
Alderman.
I'm Frans, who are you?
Fransford. I've got so many bees that's running through my brain tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Alderman, for your deep research. I have met with Ashley and her team that have done a lot of work over the course of the year. We've talked on several occasions about this, um, potential ordinance. Um, I'm really concerned about the public health concern around this issue, because if we have citizens in our community that are being affected, uh, and being hospitalized according to one of the bullet points we have here on some of the documentation, that's a concern. So, I'm in full support of, um, mirroring what Metro has put in place. So, without any further ado on that, I can, I can support that, because if Metro had put the lock on the door, that'd mean that they would be looking elsewhere, they would be looking at other borders to come over, and this would be an easy target. So, we want to meet fours with fours. So, I would be in agreement with that.
Mark.
I was one of the ones that felt this ought to be on a state level, because I just didn't feel that, that just in the city, I mean, you could go across the, the, the city limits and do this, have your puppy mill, but I spoke with a legislator today and was told that this probably would never see the light of day, so, uh, I would support a, a city ordinance.
Thank you, Madam.
Um, while you're waiting, see if anybody else wants to make a comment. I do have a, a note that Alderman Speedy asked me to read, uh, and I'll read that into the record. "I will not be supporting proposed pet shop ordinance. I will not be supporting an ordinance that would limit commerce for an existing Franklin business as already regulated by the state of Tennessee and the United States Department of Agriculture. I agree with American Kennel Club in opposing a restriction on the retail sale of pets from licensed, inspected, and regulated sources, and believe we should allow our citizens freedom of choice in selecting a pet. I also feel like enforcement of the existing Federal Animal Welfare Act protects our customers, our consumers' safety more than the proposed pet shop ordinance, so..." Any other comments? Alderman Clenden.
Well, um, let me start by saying I have two dogs, and I've had, and one of them is from the, um, animal shelter, and I've never bought a dog at a pet store. I don't think I would. Um, I don't mind that we, um, have this brought forward as an ordinance. Um, I have some concerns. Um, one of them is, I don't have a sense of whether or not this, um, how many perfectly fine dogs are bought at a pet store. Maybe the answer is not many, I don't know, but I'm concerned about, um, moving forward with an ordinance that would, um, severely, uh, im, potentially severely impact a, an existing business, and that may, um, and it may not be as narrowly tailored to the problem as it could be. Um, I, I don't, I, I, I'd like to think that there are some, maybe I'm naive, but the way the ordinance came forward to us to begin with was to say that no pet store could sell any animals except animals from the shelter, pretty much what it said, and embedded in that is the universal condemnation of anyone who's a commercial or a, a breeder that would deal with a pet store. And I'm not sure whether or not that, that condemnation is warranted. I don't say it's not, I just don't know. This young lady's story about her shepherd is tragic, but I don't have a sense of whether or not that's one terrible, terrible story out of 100, that 99 went okay, and 99 people aren't going to come down here and say what a great dog they got and how wonderful it's been, because that's not the way govern, that's not the way, that's not the way these issues tend to go. And I don't know that there's 99 or 50/50, or I don't know what the numbers are, but I'm cons, I'm a little bit concerned about, uh, legislating, and I don't, I don't mean this disparagingly at all, but it's, it's a concise way to say it. I'm a little bit concerned about legislating against the lowest common denominator. Um, so, before I was willing to go as far as the ordinance was originally presented, I would wanna be further, I would want to be convinced that it was necessary to go that far. Um, and I'm not saying I couldn't be, I'm just saying, as, as we sit here, certainly there are terrible puppy mills, no question about it, but I, that, that, to say that there are terrible puppy mills is the same as to say that there are terrible restaurant owners and terrible lawyers and terrible, you name it. Um, and, um, so, I'm, I, I just, I, I'd like to know, you know, I'd like to give the, if there's another side, I'd like to give that other side an opportunity to, to show that, you know, having been in business this long and having dealt with these breeders, our results have been as follows. And, yeah, any, anyone selling anything is going to have some, some transactions that don't go well, that's for sure, and they're particularly tragic with, I know you don't agree with me, that's okay. There, that's particularly tragic when it's a puppy. Who doesn't love puppies? Everyone loves puppies, and I don't say that to be trivial, I'm saying that, that we're, we're in the business of regulating public policy. Um, if I could snap my fingers and pass an ordinance that said only perfectly healthy puppies would be sold in the city of Franklin forevermore, I would, and, and maybe that's the only way to get there is this, that's possible. I'm concerned a little bit too about this, this, um, draft that was just passed out, because I don't have any idea what a USDA violation is. Um, I, I'm perfectly willing to eat at a restaurant with a 95 score health inspection, but that means they got five points off. Uh, so, if I never ate anywhere that didn't have perfect 100s, I'd never eat anywhere. So, I don't know what this means to say that no, that a commercial breeder with no USDA violations, ever, are there major violations, minor violations? I don't know that either. So, um, and then I'm layered on top of all of that, and this is maybe more of a philosophical problem for me, but layered on top of all of that is, are we going to get in the business as a city of Franklin with legislating against things that are, that we find morally repugnant, although they are otherwise lawful? So, why not cigarettes? Why not alcohol? Why not tattoos? Why not any number of things that...
Guns.
Guns, why not? You know, and some of those things are gonna be preempted by state law, and I suspect that before long, the, the state legislature may actually preempt this whole thing and do, and do something, take it out of our hands. Um, but, but there are any number of things that we might, if we're going to go down this road, then we need to be prepared to go down this road, and when 50 or 100 people who mean well come in and say, "I demand that you ban the sale of X in the city of Franklin," then what are we gonna tell them? So, we, we might better think about whether or not we're going to get in that business at all than whether we're going to pick and choose which ones. So, those are, that said, I'm, I'm willing to become more educated on the degree to which this is a, a problem that can only be solved this way, or whether there's some less onerous or less restrictive, uh, rule that might get the job done mostly as well. And then I've gotta just wrestle with whether or not I'm gonna support an ordinance that bans the sale of something that is otherwise lawful, and that's a big problem for me.
Okay, you're gonna, you're gonna have most, yeah, let's close it down.
One quick thing, and, and not in rebuttal to your thing, but to make a point, Dana, we've talked about this, I think this is the third or fourth time, um, and we've had a business owner who's in this business come, but to my knowledge, I've yet to hear somebody talk in a positive way. We don't have an outpouring or a showing of people that said, "Let me tell you about my wonderful experience."
That doesn't mean you're not there.
The pendulum, I understand that, but you would think that somebody would bring those people to show...
That's not been my experience at all when it comes to regulation and complaints.
I understand. I guess my point is...
The people who are unhappy come to City Hall.
I, and I'm not fighting with you, I guess my point is if, if there are positive experiences out there, I would love to hear them.
I would too.
And I would invite them to come, so, the end.
Just one quick thing.
One quick one. I'm gonna put you on the timer.
One of the reasons I brought the other language would be because of your concern and Alderman Speedy's concern, um, and we certainly can work with that. Uh, that was specifically brought because you did not, you were, you were concerned with, and Alderman Speedy was concerned with, uh, somebody going out of business because of our, of our action. And I, and I think we all get that, and so I purposely brought that, and that certainly can be adjusted and worked over. Um, the other side certainly has had the opportunity, and Dana, you're right, most of the people that are happy with certain things don't show up, but at the same time, you would think one person would come, or you would think that, uh, somebody here in the city would make sure that someone was here to speak positively for the, the, the retail sales of pets. And the other thing is, um, the, um, USDA, USDA violations, yes, we can bring those forth to the, the board to, to, we can bring that through email to you all to read and to understand those, but yes, we do regulate businesses, we do regulate cigarettes, we do regulate alcohol, we do have stiff laws, and we already started. That door's been, that Pandora's box has been open for years.
We have a ban.
No, and we're not banning sales. We are banning, uh, the, 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 the retail sales, absolutely, but that is because of, of the nature of, of what happens and where these pets come from. And so, when you look at the health, safety, and welfare of a community, I, I think that we can talk about that, um, as being, uh, a concern, and I think we, we do that with, um, with some other things in our community as well. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on, uh...
Thank you.
To item two, which is an event permit for Raise the Roofs. Uh, I don't see any comment there. We'll go to items three, four, and five, which are all renewals for, uh, liquor license in grocery stores. Any comments on those? Uh, then we'll go on to, uh, number six, which is consideration of City of Franklin Contract 2018 dash 0084 for professional services agreement with Tuck Hinton Architects for master planning of the park at Harlinsdale Farm, and the amount not to exceed $39,459, $50. Um, it all appeared, and I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Hello?
I'm not Lisa Clayton, I'm Kevin Lindsey. Sorry, Madam. So, the, the item, uh, item six, uh, is referring to an update to, to the master plan at the park at Harlinsdale Farm. Uh, the idea here is that we, uh, we've identified various structures to develop conceptual, more detailed conceptual projects, uh, gives us a better opportunity to, uh, potentially use partnership funds to, to pick off smaller projects. As you know, the Harlinsdale project is, is very sizable in nature, and to, to fund a project like that in its entirety is, is a little unwieldy, so, this is an effort to break it down into more manageable pieces, uh, and, uh, hopefully make some progress in, in, in that way, so.
Determine what some of the costs are gonna be for some of the projects, and this is hotel motel tax, I understand.
Correct.
At least, this is how the architect's fee is gonna be paid.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? We'll move on to item number seven, which is, uh, an agreement between the City of Franklin and the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System for, provision of pension services.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I wanna introduce my, my colleague Sarah Silves from the, uh, the HR department who, uh, has been working through, is one of the team members working through this project along with me. We, um, we did introduce, uh, one aspect of this agreement at the last work session, wanted to come back with you. Um, actually, we have, uh, the full agreement, a law department approved agreement. It's a, it's a restatement of an agreement from December 13th, 2016, in which administration of certain aspects of the now closed City of Franklin Employee Pension Plan are, will be administered by the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System. And the, uh, the agreement from 2016, um, that specific agreement directed management of the assets of the closed pension plan, that has, um, 92% of the assets have been managed by TCRS now for about a year and a half. What we're bringing back to you is a restatement, which will also, um, extend the TCRS's administration to the, what we call the basic payroll services, which will be paying our retirees on a monthly basis. We currently have approximately 180 retirees who receive monthly benefits from our closed pension plan. We also, um, in this agreement, will, there'll be, um, some benefit calculation services, some, um, basic paper roll, paper processing, which will be done by TCRS. For instance, um, when a retiree wants to change where their benefits are being sent to a new bank account, the, um, the ten, the, uh, W-2 form, some of those tax forms will be handled by TCRS staff, um, rather than a custodial bank, so, um, this is part of a, a process of having more of our pension, um, system administered by TCRS, but they, of course, are administering the plan as, as the closed plan was, was established under, under our pension requirements. The, um, just a couple of aspects that I do wanna point out are the fees. The, uh, we do currently, of course, pay a custodial bank a fee to, uh, make those payments every month to retirees. The, the fee that TCRS will be charging is essentially the same, we pay... The, the fee that TCRS will be charging is essentially the same, we pay currently about thirteen thousand dollars a year to, to US Bank, and this is twelve thousand dollars a year. And of course, those will go up slightly over time, but it's, it's, it's effectively taking advantage of the, the services that TCRS already provides in a, in a large bulk amount to retirees of the state of Tennessee as well as other local governments. So that fee is very comparable. There is a, what I would consider a setup fee, an infrastructure technology fee, a total, it's in total of forty thousand eighty dollars, which would be charged thirteen thousand three hundred and sixty dollars annually for the first three years. And that's for the programming that TCRS will be doing to, to set us up into the, the TCRS computer system. And, and that's essentially a setup fee. Of course, we have saved significant dollars on the investment management fee since we went to TCRS. We, in the first full year of being with them, we saved just under five hundred thousand dollars in investment management fees. So this, this setup fee of forty thousand dollars is, is part of the transition. But we do in total save money by going to the TCRS. We, we do want to bring up just, I want to do one follow-up item. The, the major transition that we see with our retirees is changing from payment date of the first of the month until the last date of the month. That's what TCRS has historically paid retirees on the last business day of the month, and we have paid on the first business day. We have had more conversations with US Bank on that transition, and they are only willing to do one tran, one transition month in which we move the payment date. So our, our proposal, and, and in fact, the agreement that we're asking to consider, we will be transitioning in the month of January twenty nineteen to TCRS for making payments to our retirees. We'll have a November first payment to retirees from US Bank. We'll have a December fourteenth payment from US Bank. And then in January, TCRS takes over, and on January thirty-first is the first payment from TCRS to our retirees. And we will be providing significant notices to our retirees because we know that this is change. And then there will also need to be some, for many retirees, we'll need to work on their direct deposits as well to make sure that they can accommodate and will accommodate those changes. So we, we did wanted to advise you that that will be the staff recommendation to transition from what we believe will be the biggest transition item is changing that payment date from the first of the month to the last of the month.
Any questions?
I noticed that on this one, there was also a third possibility, and that was to make one, one additional payment. And so that means that they would continue to get the same amount of money, basically, at the same time. And I noticed it said here, the one-time additional payment would be four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. However, we've already said tonight that we have saved five hundred thousand dollars in management fees.
At the, at the June fourth pension, employee pension committee meeting, we went into the, the transition options in, in great amount of detail. That, in fact, the, the option that, that staff is presenting here tonight is the recommendation, which was a recom, which was the recommendation of the pension committee. All retirees will still receive their same twelve payments within the same twelve-month calendar year. There is no reduction of, of dollars for the calendar year. The transition option for an additional payment was had the expense to the pension of four hundred, which is currently is an additional monthly payment, which is four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in, in aggregate. And that option does not, it would have one calendar year in which recipients would receive thirteen payments. That's why there's additional cost. And in that option, of course, there is no extension of dates between payments. Currently, there's approximately thirty days a month between, thirty days between monthly benefit payments. And if there was a additional transition payment, let's say you would have a December first payment from US Bank, you would have a US Bank payment on December, the last business day of December, and then TCRS would pick up on January thirty-first. So that option does have the additional cost to the pension, and I believe that was a concern of the pension committee, was that you would, you have additional cost to the pension of four hundred and twenty-five thousand. Thus, thus the recommendation to stagger, to do the pension staggering of dates to, you do not by any means take away people's retirement, but you do increase for two months, thirty-day period to forty-five day period, and then at the end of January of two thousand and nineteen, be back on a thirty-day period.
Well, it's just that, you know, many people who are retired depend upon this, and to have to wait forty-five days for the same amount of money that you were normally getting every thirty days, to me is a concern. I haven't, I have not had anybody that's on the retirement speak to me, you know, about this. But again, in thinking about it, I know you're saying technically there would be thirteen payments one year, but really it would go in three hundred and sixty-six days. I mean, let's face it, that's the way it is, you know, so.
It's, we, we, we acknowledge as staff that that, that, the, the two, the two transition issues are the issues of change, the change of dates, and then also the, the length. That, that can be, that can be, that can be a challenge, and we, we do acknowledge that, and, and the pension committee went into pretty lengthy conversation about that as well.
And have you made this available to the people who are receiving this? And to get any comments from them? Is there anybody, I don't even know, is there anybody on the pension committee that is a recipient?
There is, there is not a retiree on the pension committee.
As I say, it truly, it truly does mean that there, there will be, as I say, they will be having the forty-five day at the, with the same amount of money that they probably have been spending in thirty days for, for this time. And that, that is my, my concern.
Other comments, all in branch.
When we start putting out the communication, because I think that made the communication regarding this change.
We're, we're asking for consideration of the agreement in the, in the meeting later on tonight. Once the agreement's approved, we intended to go ahead and start working immediately after to start doing communication.
With the recipients.
Yes.
Let everybody know.
Yeah.
But still, sometimes even if you know, it doesn't mean that you have the extra money-
Yeah.
-to pay for those, those times. That, that's my concern there. And, and as I say, it, it truly, it truly does mean that over a period of time, they really are losing one. If, if you, if you, if you just spread it out. But again, the main thing I'm concerned about is that for people that have been depending upon that money for thirty days, and then to have to stretch it a couple of times for forty-five days could be a real problem to not just one or two people, but to a number of people.
You said that they'd be losing a payment, I don't think that's the case.
They'll, they'll be the same amount of payments in the calendar year, but there is two forty-five day periods rather than the typical, the traditional thirty-day period between payments.
But it does mean that-
Alderman McClinton.
Do you suppose that we could ask them what they would prefer before we decide it for them? I mean, they, they may know something we don't know, they may say it doesn't matter. Okay. They may say, "If you do that, we're doomed." Is there a chance here that we can kind of conduct a survey, or at least a notification that we're debating these decisions? And if they have anything to let us know, let us know. Because there's not a member on the, we, we, we've talked a lot, you know, a lot of professional, highly educated people have kicked this around, but not included in that group or anyone that has to live with the decision.
I, I think the concern is certainly that we, we want to aid in the transition as much as we can, but if the, if the, if the feedback is, is that we have to have, we can only have a thirty-day period, there will be an additional cost to the pension fund of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to do an additional payment, so.
Well, and, and we might decline to do that for all the right reasons, and that's fine. But if it turns out that we're thinking a lot harder about this than they will, then I'd have greater peace of mind doing the option you're recommending. I just, I don't know what the sense of, I, I don't know whether or not there is a deadline upon us by which we have to make this decision, or can we, can we take the time, ask, question? You know, sometimes, 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 no, I'm not gonna do that to her. If the, if the answer matters, then sometimes it's good to ask the question first.
I would recommend that we, we consider going ahead and moving forward with going to TCRS, and because there is about a six monthly time in order to get all the programming correct so that the end of January, that we are ready to go. But we, I mean, we certainly can go back, and because we thought it was important to be very open with what those transition issues were, so that we certainly can come back, even if, if that was, if that's a desire for us to do some surveying, we can come back to the board as, as quickly as we can with, with those results would be. But then we would still work to get, and work together to transition to TCRS for, for January.
Yeah, I, I don't want to push back, I mean, I want to make the decision timely. But my, I guess my question really is, do we have the time to ask the question of the people who will have to live with our decision before we have to make the final decision?
We, there are advantages to going in January for the benefit of the, of the retirees, because that way we will be able to stay with one ten ninety-nine form per year, and not get into the confusion of receiving two ten, two ten ninety-nines. And so to get into the, we, I believe we can still have more talk about, we can have more conversation, deliberation about the transition itself, if we can go ahead and get an agreement to go to TC, that we're gonna agree to go to TCRS for these additional services, and then we'll come back to you with-
Yeah, all I'm, the, 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 the moving to TCRS is fine. I, I think we're-
In fact, very good.
Yeah, I think we're, I think, I don't think I could be talked out of that, I guess maybe, but probably not. I'm just concerned about the transition and how to make it as light on the impacted people as possible, and their feedback might prove useful.
We, we, since we do have just one meeting in July, I believe we could come back the first meeting in August and have, have some feedback, have feedback, and with, with Sarah's assistance with HR, and bring that back, because we, we, as soon as then, as soon as we do have a deliberation about the transition, we'll start doing notifications and multiple, multiple notifications of whatever that decision is. But we, we can come back the first of August, I, I think that would give us time that we wouldn't have for the first of July meeting to, to do that.
You know, the pension committee talked about much shorter transitions over a longer period of time, and apparently inflexibility that occurred was with the US Bank. They would only do it once, which has kind of created the dilemma we're in. But I, I think it's important for us to continue to move forward to, to avoid that confusion of two forms for the IRS, and also to get this working because of the lead time on it. But I think we could revisit how it transitions and survey them, and so we could continue to move this forward, if that's my understanding.
And, and, and as you say, by, by August, you, you would be able to get some-
Get some, get feedback for you.
Okay. All right, great. We'll move on then to item eight, which is discussion regarding stormwater project funding. Which, yeah, let me just make a comment. Tonight, the, the purpose of this item is more to have a presentation for the board related to the stormwater fund, where we are on certain projects, how staff has ranked those projects, so that we can better understand where we are. The other thing is to give, give us an opportunity to look critically at the stormwater fee, which has not changed for years, and not really kept up with inflation and so on. So that may be something that we want to look at or consider after you've heard the presentation, so. And I know I have a number of people wanting to speak, and I think they're speaking primarily on projects that affect them specifically as far as raising their homes, or I think, I won't, they'll, they'll tell us what they want to talk about. So, Paul?
We, just a, a brief introduction, we, we do appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. There is a packet in, in front of you with some information. It starts out with a schedule entitled, Stormwater Fund Forecast. And what we've put together tonight is not, it's a little, a little bit of a step back from the, the issues that we've addressed in the, in the last few work sessions. But, but this is, of course, a stormwater utility that was established in two thousand and four, March of two thousand and four by the board. It, it was, it was established there for, to, to satisfy requirements of our stormwater permit, as well as, we also have been, had, had a plan to do drainage projects, and there have been increasing operations for those, those types of activities in this fund. Part of two thousand and ten was when this fund had remaining funds at the end of every year, which were kept into that fund, and we grew a fund balance as that utility was in its infancy. And we were going through the identification of, of projects, as well as the permitting regulations were being sufficed. And so beginning about two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, we started working on projects. Many of these projects take some time to, to implement, there certainly are a great deal of environmental regulations and, and designs that go into these projects. And we are here in the start of budget year two thousand and nineteen, several projects have moved through that fairly long lengthy process and are either in, that are in ready-to-go phases. And Paul's gonna talk about what these projects are, and the, in essence, the operating costs of the funds have grown, of course, over time, while the, the revenue structure has remained unchanged since two thousand and four. And we're gonna start with, we actually have a, on the first page that be front of you, we plan to start with Paul going through the, the projects, in a, the, the wide list of projects that are in the, the stormwater program, especially here in the short term.
So just to run through the projects and just a little brief history, the way we rank these projects is based off of the strategic plan. We rank them off of a, a matrix that we put together. The top twenty-five percent are given four stars, then it goes down to three, two, and then one-star projects. And what I say, during every CIP process, any project on this list we feel is important, and that's why it's on this list, and ultimately, we leave it to the board to select the five-star projects. Now, in previous CIPs, the board has only selected five-star projects on transportation and parks projects. These, these type of projects never actually got voted on as a five-star. They actually just got folded into the annual operating budget or capital budget, approved as part of the engineering department's overall budget. And so that's how we've proceeded with a lot of these projects as part of that annual approval. So we'll run through the projects quickly and try to give you a good overview of them. The first project is the Ralston Creek project. This is one in which we've received complaints for, for a while on bank stabilization. The bank has failed in one location, washing an entire backyard almost practically into the stream. Our street department went out, they tried to do some repairs. It's, it's just a much bigger project and requires more of a structural type repair with some type of wall or sta, stabilization, it's bigger than what they typically do in house. There's one property located, and I'll show it to you on the screen, it is... Could you make it full screen, Addison? Yeah, if you scroll down. This property right here, they are experiencing a structural failure in their house. The house foundation has generally separated, and so they're really pushing us to, to do this project. The rest of it is just nuisance-type bank failures that have occurred. And so this project right now is under design, moving towards construction. Estimated cost of the project's around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Next project-
And let me ask you about that since you're on your man. So this is just a sort of a temporary fix kind of thing for now? Because this is gonna require more work in the future.
Yeah, what we've done out there is a temporary fix, it's actually failed as well, and so that's why we're coming back with more of an engineering fix, and looking to get a contractor on board that can help us with building, retaining walls, et cetera.
So just trying to get a handle on the money, though, with this project, since you've got it up there, this is probably gonna need more work in the future.
Yes, yes.
So just think about that, everybody, because it's gonna require more money.
But what you're recommending is-
It's Ralston Creek, though, right?
Permanent in that location, it's just, it's a bigger area that will need more work. Is that, am I putting words in your mouth?
Yeah, the, the main thing is just where you see a blue is where we're receiving the complaints. The one house is the one that really needs addressed, because the, they basically lost most of their backyard.
But, but the area extends out further than this blue line. You've got issues up there with Liberty Hills Lake and around. So this project, we're gonna be seeing future projects in this area, are gonna, we're gonna have to address.
So if we go to the next- So, if we go to the next one, this is the Parkview Drainage Area Project. This is one that we're not ready to move forward with anytime soon. And really what this amounts to be is a lot of nuisance flooding. There's been a lot of development on, I believe it's Evan Street there. And so we receive a lot of complaints. This is just an area in an older part of town that has no stormwater infrastructure in the ground. This is not an easy fix. The only way to fix it is to extend a storm system from the Harpeth River all the way down south margin up into this area. So until that project happens, there's nothing we can really do for this area up here. So this is more of a, a long-term project. But again, an older section of town with no stormwater infrastructure.
Could I ask one question before you go on? If that, if there's no fix to that, all right, how did those houses get approved?
Honestly, a lot of that happened before I was here. I believe it was subdivided and the lots approved and they showed calculations that, you know, the stormwater wasn't a problem. It clearly is a problem. I do know it's getting into some of the crawl spaces. It's getting into, like, there's a barn or two that it gets into. It's not getting into any finished floors that I'm aware of. And so I would consider that to be more nuisance flooding.
I just can't understand, it's always, water has always stood there. Water, it always has. And how in the world those houses got built, I don't know. I had somebody ask if, if there was a possibility that that could be developed back there and I said, oh, absolutely not. Water stands back there as forever. And lo and behold, there they are, built.
Next project is the Battle Avenue Project. This, this project was approved through a resolution, basically funding us through right of way in construction. We started looking at the construction costs and the right of way costs. We essentially kind of put the brakes on it. There's about five houses that right now have experienced flooding problem. Two of them have basements, they get one to three foot of water in them during these large rain events. The other three houses get water in their crawl space and up to the floor framing that's been documented, based on our modeling, that's been documented also based on some of the flood events that have happened out in this area. We spent a lot of time looking at this project, studying it. Unfortunately, there's a low spot and there's really not a good, easy engineering solution to fix this. What we're proposing at this point for this project is to consider a, a buyout of the two houses that received the worst type of, worst flooding, which is one to three foot in the basement area. And what we'd look at doing is putting in an underground detention system that could withhold the hundred-year storm event and protect the remaining houses from flooding and provide some relief to that, that subdivision there. Estimated cost about 1.8 million dollars and we ranked this at a, as a two-star project.
Paul, Mr. Cox, yeah, I, I agree with that because I was out there just this week and, and walking at those two houses that really need to be taken out. And that is the plan that, where I understand you're talking about. We will take those two that has been flooding and will continue to flood. And once again, I think this is kind of a man-made issue with the flooding in that area based on the structure, the storage structure behind that. Prior to that storage structure, my understanding from the history of the neighbors that's been there for years, that wasn't the case. But once the, and I think we may have had a conversation about this already, that that storage unit's been built there created that flooding issue with those two houses in particular, but maybe four you're saying, but two really needs to be, be dealt with right away. I think one of the families is in the process of selling and I think today is the last day. We may hear from one of those people talking, but it, it's just a bad situation for them.
Yeah, that, that was a good overview. In 94 and 2004, the storage facility was allowed to expand. They have a stormwater pump station there. If that stormwater pump station doesn't work or doesn't operate, they definitely flood and our modeling from our consultant showed that even with it there, that there is still flooding issues. And that's, that's what we're experiencing in reality as well. So that is a good, good explanation. Next project is the Figures Drive Project. This is one that during Battle Avenue, this came up and again, this is a lot of nuisance flooding. There are one, or there are about three properties that I'm aware of, I'm sorry, five, five residential structures that I'm aware of that have been impacted by the larger storm events. That's water in the crawl space up to the framing and in garages. And this is primarily due to lack of infrastructure in some of these older areas and the lack in some undersized culverts that we would have to go in and fix. And so essentially, we'd be putting a stormwater infrastructure down Figures Drive and then we'd be upsizing some critical culverts to try to reduce the flooding in this area long term. It's about a 1.2 million dollar, I'm sorry, about a 1.86 million, 84 million dollar project. We ranked this as one-star project just because there's a lot of, a lot of other variables and a lot of design that still needs to go into this and it mostly is nuisance flooding. Next project is the Jordan Branch Project. This is one that I would say that we are very committed to. We have, there's no flooding of structures happening here, but we've been working with this HOA for many, many months, maybe two, three years now at this point. It's just a really eroded ditch or wet weather conveyance in the backyard. Lots of trees are potentially falling, root structures exposed. The HOA asked us to take on this project and we did. We've had numerous public meetings. It's actually in the bid process now and that's why I say we're very committed to it at this point. However, the board would still has to approve those bids and as soon as it bids out, we'll bring those back. It's around $760,000 total project cost, the construction being 700,000 of that is, is what is currently estimated. And that project right now is in the bidding phase. So we plan to continue that forward and we'll present those bids to the board as soon as we receive and open those bids.
And I might just mention that this is actually become, you know, it's, it's not just their problem inside, it's a regional problem where it's come into the area from the, the region. And a lot of the backyards are falling off and huge drug under trees are there. So, getting ahead, we're not really getting ahead of it, but we're getting ahead of them losing more of their backyards. So that's, that's a good thing.
Next project overview is, it's a 72-inch corrugated metal pipe in the Maplewood subdivision. The bottom of the pipe is missing. This is pretty common in corrugated metal pipe. It's not in danger of immediate failure, but it does need to be addressed. And so we're, very difficult project. It goes between four houses and there's about 15 foot between the houses. And so it is not feasible to even dig and replace this project. We've been working with streets, street department to put together a lining project. This, this is a critical infrastructure project that we need to take care of before the corrugated pipe gets worse. And so we're preparing to, we have easements in place, the designs in place. Once we get the funding figured out, this is one that we need to get addressed and we're planning on trying to line the pipe so a non-dig solution. We're going to line the pipe and, and basically grow it around the pipe to restore the structural integrity of the roadway and the culvert and everything else. So it'll, it'll avoid having to dig next to these houses. We had that as a four-star project. Next project, and you'll be seeing the bids on this project here shortly, is the Carton Lane Bridge Replacement. This is another corrugated metal pipe. There are sections of that pipe missing as well. And so this project has been designed as a three-sided box culvert. It's been bid out. Those bids will be presented to you here shortly. I want to say it was around $260,000 was what the bid was for, for a full bridge replacement and resurfacing of the street. And this is one that is a four-star project that we absolutely need to address. It only serves one residential house, but it does have the turnaround and the cul-de-sac for Carton Lane. So, these bids are being brought forward and all permits are in place for that construction.
Did you say this was bid out already?
It's already been bid out, yes ma'am. Next project is a stormwater project in the Carlisle Lane subdivision, or the Carlisle subdivision. There's a property there and I'll show it to you on the map right here. It has flooded on three occasions. Essentially, the garage floor and part of the finished floor is actually lower than the stream channel. And so you can imagine why it has flooded. It's got a pump that helps to try to keep the water out. There is no solution. Our modeling showed about three houses that are impacted by that hundred-year storm event. It is not in a regulated flood plane. However, we do anticipate these structures receiving damage during big, heavy rain events. We did do a preliminary study of it. That study revealed that if we pipe in this ditch that, or this wet weather conveyance, that we could resolve the flooding issues and address this problem long-term. And so we've put it into the CIP to try to continue moving forward to a solution to resolve that, those issues. But, yeah, the one house has definitely documented flooding on three occasions. This is the Fairground Street Drainage System. We talked about this with Battle Avenue. There is limited stormwater infrastructure on this section of Columbia Avenue. What's there is old and needs upgraded. This is Fairground Street. The only stormwater catch basins that are here actually discharge into this low spot and connect to nothing. This is what I would call nuisance flooding. It does contribute to the Battle Avenue, but it's, it's not the main cause of the Battle Avenue flooding that you see over there. It's really just nuisance flooding that it goes there and it sits for two, three, four weeks and then it perks into the soil. We can address this by putting in stormwater infrastructure on Columbia and Fairgrounds. However, it's an expensive project at about 1.6 million dollars. It's essentially rebuilding the roadway and all the infrastructure associated with that roadway to try to address that problem. It's about the tie-in point. The Columbia Avenue project will tie in about right there. And so this would almost be an extension of that Columbia Avenue project. And so it makes sense for us to be thinking ahead and trying to prioritize this project. Next one is the offer that's been made by the US Army Corps of Engineers. It's raising around 26 homes. However, the Army Corps is revisiting the number of homes that qualify for this program. They're willing to contribute 65% of the funding and either the property owner or the city would need to come up with the other 35%. We've talked about this internally. While we would like to get a decision made on whether the city's contributing or not in an effort to continue moving the forward, their, for the project, there seemed to obviously be a consensus around us being part of the program. The question is, do we participate financially or not? And so in July, our plan is to bring forward a resolution that commits us to the program but does not commit us to the funding. And we'll continue to work on these projects and with the board as to whether they want to commit the other 35% to raise it. But again, generally, it's taking these 26 structures and elevating them two feet above that hundred-year flood plain elevation with 30, with 65% coming federally from the US Army Corps of Engineers. The last project is, and this is one we just talked about, the West Main Bridge Widening Project. We had a resolution approved to basically move forward with the design right of way acquisition of the project. However, we're putting the brakes on that at this point to, for further discussion to see where we go with the stormwater fund overall. But the intent of this project was to widen the bridge to the north to add a shoulder. That shoulder could be used for pedestrians. And the, the key concern was there's no way for pedestrians to cross the road here. And so we estimated that project at around $455,000. The design is a small cost of that and so as we look to prioritize these projects, that's one we'll be looking for direction on just because we've not invested a lot at this point.
I thought we were working right on that without delay.
But we, the, the board definitely approved a resolution. I think before we moved forward with doing it, we wanted to get feedback on the overall stormwater projects to see how to move forward with all the projects, not just this one. And so that's really what we're waiting on. We could always look at moving forward with the design. It's a minor cost. That kind of keeps us moving in the right direction and that's something we can definitely talk about.
Well, I would like to see us move ahead with that.
Hello, I think we're going to need more time than what we have tonight to discuss and rank these, or discuss these projects. So, I'm going to suggest that after you make some comments or questions and after Paul finishes, that maybe we bring it back to another work session to work on it a little bit more. But I think the idea of continuing to move forward with some design, things like that sounds like the appropriate thing to do.
We can do that.
And we'll just hear, if we have a couple of speakers.
That's right.
We'll just hear their comments so that can help us as we deliberate.
So, I've got five speakers and we, I'm looking at the clock, so I, I'm going to give them two minutes apiece. So, Mr. Cox, Mr. Dunn. I think that's Kristen Riddle, Ridlo? Okay. And then Buddy Mills and, y'all aren't like me. Charles Martin? Yeah, there you go. Guy with the same shirt on. Oops, I shouldn't have said that.
Marston.
Go ahead and start, Mr. Cox.
In Marston.
Marston.
Marston, I'm sorry.
I'm going to hold all my comments on this particular item until I get some more details. And Paul, I'd like to get line item details on some of these projects from you, the actual cost because as being one of the original committee members of the Stormwater Ordinance that wrote this and actually went into details on what this fund was used for, I'm, do not feel comfortable with the way some of these funds are being used. And so I want to see how they're being used, what's exactly what the cost is on these funds and make sure that they're not coming from the stormwater fund when they should be coming from someplace else. At least what we had an intent to do with it, so.
Interesting. Okay.
Oh, I'm Martin Dunn. I live at 109 Battle Avenue. And looking at this, the, the ranking, the priority of these different projects, now they're all worthy, but I think the matrix that the city's been using, there's something wrong with it because there's only one project that really comes out ahead as far as the cost and the benefits concerned. And that's raising those 28 houses. And here's the reason for it. If they're raised, the property value is going to go up and that's going to generate additional taxes, property taxes for the city. Also, two-thirds of the cost is going to be paid for by the federal government. So the actual cost of this to the city is not going to be 2.7 million dollars. It's only going to be $875,000 to raise 26 houses out of danger from flooding. And the third thing is, and the most important thing, is by raising these houses, it's going to provide safety to the people that live there. In my particular house, the floor has to come up six feet, 10 inches. That's that high. I don't swim as well as I used to and my wife certainly doesn't. And so the one thing that I think is not being considered in ranking is the safety that's going to be a benefit to the people that are there, plus any rescuers that have to come out. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kristen Riddler and I live at 109 Battle Avenue with my husband and my three children who were here but couldn't stand waiting any longer. I think thankful for all of us. As Paul mentioned, we live at 109 Battle Avenue. When we moved in, at one of the meetings, it was mentioned that potentially the homeowners knew that they were in a flood zone. And I just want to clarify, when we moved in, we were told the issue of the flooding was a storage facility issue. The pumps were not working. Flood cert came back, all of our title work has come back twice through a refinance as well, clear. We were told between January and we were approached from the city, sorry, when we were approached between January and April, we found out that the dream of our home, of us building on and making it what we wanted it to because the yard was so large, not only couldn't happen, we'd never be able to pull permits, but also our basement, which was also the, one of the buying factors, needed to be gutted. That's 1,200 square feet of living space that we have. It's a bedroom, which now serves as my husband's office. He works from home. It's also my children's playroom. It's a bathroom. It's a laundry room. We would go from a 2,700 square foot home, four bedrooms, two baths, to a 1,500 square foot home, three bedrooms, one bath. As I was looking through some of the papers for the Franklin Forward, I found the city's mission is quote, "to strive to be a community of choice for individuals and families to grow and prosper through an excellent quality of life." We had that, but at this point, we can't move on with that. The situation as it stands has been seven months since we were approached. It's been seven months of stress. It's been seven months of telling my kids, my child, my child. It's been seven months of telling my kids, "My child, my child going to kindergarten? I don't know where you're gonna go to kindergarten, because I don't know what's gonna happen." It breaks my heart to think that they will not know, we don't know, and it's just up in the air. My understanding was the start of this, there was money for the project two years ago, which is why we were approached. And now, we're on hold again. We did put a contract. We're the people that were told there was a vote, June 12th, found out, after putting a contract in a house that when we thought everything was gonna move forward potentially, that it didn't even happen. The vote didn't even happen. And now we're stuck again. We're stuck without knowing anything. And we just can't continue by not voting. We're stuck. We're stuck in limbo. We're losing a quality of life. We don't want to put repairs into our house because we may not have it in two, three months, a year. We don't know. We're just stuck. And we just would really appreciate you voting so that we can move forward and have the quality of life that we thought we were gonna get in this home, that we thought was gonna be our dream home. Thank you.
My name is Buddy Mills. I live at 111 Battle Avenue, one of the properties that has been mentioned in the Battle Avenue buyout. Might say that my family moved to this location January 1, 1954. I have a perspective on the 100 block of Battle Avenue before the fill was made to build the Fair Grounds Mini Storage. We never had water that stands in our backyard. We have our own water problem, but we never had water come in our houses until after the Fair Ground Mini Storage Project was completed. I commend the City of Franklin Engineering Department, Mr. Paul Holson, and Ben Worley, who works with these months, and acknowledging through their work on the drainage project in this block, that errors were made by the city in a previous generation that caused us to flood. Certainly commend them for acknowledging this problem. And as I said, I don't need to restate what Ms. Branford said, but we really have kind of been on hold. We were told that two years ago, funding for this project was approved, and we would just like a decision on the project. Thank you.
I'm Charles Marston, 129 Eunaville Drive. I am in the group that needs a house, have our house raised possibly. The difficult for us, I'm going to read this because I'm blessed with les dextia and I sometimes can't get the word I need. The difficulty of us on fixed income to pay the 35% per, 35% may put us out of the, out of the game. So, the debate of whether it's the city government's fault that our houses were built in a floodplain, or the county, or whoever is a moot subject, we, you, they were built, we bought, we lived there. The city is neither doing us a favor nor compensating us for a mistake made 50 years ago. We, on the other hand, are doing the city a favor. We are willing to have our property permanently raised, six and a half, my number was seven and a half, thus making my living space a lot more inconvenient for the, from now on. That, by doing this, permanently making our living space less accessible. By doing this, the city, by helping us, the city keeps our property in the tax rolls and on the count of workforce property. Bottom line, without financial help, we may be forced to stay as we are and hope that when our houses are flooded again, FEMA will buy us out, knock down our house, at which point, another property goes off the tax roll, is no longer workforce property, and the city will forever have another vacant lot to mow two, three times a month. Thank you very much.
You're getting good at this. Exactly two minutes.
I got a, buy me a new shirt.
You got a lucky shirt on. Okay, we'll have this come back. Is it, yeah.
Yep.
If you could also staff come back and look at the revenues and the, do some analysis of the, of the revenues as well as the operations in, within that fund when we come back as well.
I think that's a great idea.
And start, and start that conversation.
Because, you know, I've, I've looked and really, there are some, there've been some years, I think two years ago, the personnel and operations went up by 14% in one year. And then, a year after that, it was four-plus percent. So, it really meant that there's really not much money for projects. I mean, once you spend, what's the, you know, what we have right now, that, I mean, that $4 million is about gonna be it unless there's some other things happening.
Okay, we'll move on to nine, which is a on-call annual contract for asphalt work, Resolution 2018-49. Any questions about that one? We'll move on to number 10, which is Resolution, pardon?
My Joe.
Number 10 is Resolution 2018-50 to award FY 2019 on-call concrete, contract work. No questions. Number 11 is Resolution 2018-54 validating the cost of construction offset eligible roadway improvements from McEwen Drive. Would you explain that, Mr. Gerth?
Yeah, I will, thank you. This was a road impact fee offset agreement that was established in the late 2000s with Southern Land Company for their McEwen Place development. They started that work. They improved McEwen Drive, and we provided them roughly a million dollars in credits to their road impact fees for the buildings they've, they've built. Since that time, they've transferred ownership of the property to Boyle Investments, who is in the process and has recently obtained permits. And they want to transfer this agreement to them, which they're allowed to do. Absent of the documentation we require today when offset agreements are established and we reconcile them, because of the datedness of this agreement, we wanted to come back to you and let you know there's about a million dollars left of offsets that will be allowed for Boyle's buildings that they're building in McEwen Place now, and this agreement will then be closed down.
Yeah, yeah. Only thing is, there were three different page, I mean, three different things where we just had the same, the same paper three times on this?
I'm sorry.
They just, there were, on these things that we got, there were three different papers that were exactly the same thing, five-page long.
On the, on the attach, on the agreement?
On all the attachments, yeah. Yeah. But anyway, I don't, I don't disagree, but look at it, yeah.
Again, we, we're reconciling that and wanted to be transparent and bring that to you and let you know that Lynn Oslin and Paul, Michael, Christina, myself are looking at all these agreements very closely to make sure they're executed properly.
As I say.
Okay, item number 12 is discussion on irrigation metering structure.
All right, thank you, sir. Can we open up the presentation? Oh, not that one. Item 12 there, yes. Thank you, sir. So, we, we've, have had discussions about this item previously. We've had a, some input from, can we go to the next slide, please? So we've had some input regarding how we, we provide irrigation water to our customers. So, we're gonna run through that, provide some, some potential options and go from there. What we'd like for, from you all this evening is to get some feedback from you and guidance on, on how to proceed. So if we can go to the...
Oh, does this work?
Oh, cool. All right. So, per municipal code, an irrigation meter is a meter that's designed to allow flow to, to pass through the meter and intended for use for outdoor watering. And when you have an irrigation meter, you don't have sanitary sewer charges tagged on to that as you would with a typical domestic meter. Can we go to the next slide, Madison, please? So, we provide irrigation water in three ways currently. We have reclaimed water, which is not part of the discussion this evening. We also provide irrigation water through the domestic meter, which gets charged the water fee as well as the sanitary sewer fee. And then we have individual irrigation meters that are hooked on to our domestic potable water system. So, the issue lies, and you'll see that the chart on the right here, is that the irrigation impact fees, the cost to, to purchase one of those is, is seemingly high. So the return on, on an investment for a customer can be challenging to make that decision. So, another way that we provide instead of the irrigation meter is through, obviously, our domestic water meter. Our rates are built to acknowledge that water in the summertime can be used for outdoor uses such as irrigation. Therefore, our sewer rate structure has a declining rate structure. So the more water that's used in the summertime, the sewer rates decrease. So that, that structure is intended to acknowledge that outdoor usage. So that, that's, that's what we currently do. And, and the concern for some customers is that they are paying sanitary sewer fee for water that they spray in their gardens and their yards, so. So we go to the next slide, slide, please? So we've looked at two, two alternatives that are, that are used in the, in the area, one of which is a winter pricing model. So, the winter pricing model is you, you take an average of the winter usage of a customer, say for example, that averages 5,000 gallons a month, and you apply that towards the sanitary sewer fee during the summertime. They're using the winter volume of consumption for water and applying that in the summertime for sanitary sewer consumption. They would stay, still pay for the water consumption that they use, but it levels out their sanitary sewer usage thereby not paying sanitary sewer fees for water that's going on the ground. Right. So there's different ways to implement that winter pricing model. You can add surcharges to it. There's a whole slew of different things you can do. What that, we, what we expect that to do is, of course, increase the demand on the potable water system. We will expect that to have an impact to the sanitary sewer rates by between, it says two to $3. I think it's probably more along a dollar to $3 per month per customer. Now, I will say that that is based on an evaluation of the 2016 Inside the City data usage. So it does, it's not a broad citywide check and it's done for a snapshot, so one-year period. We didn't have readily available to us the data from previous years due to the billing system change. So, when we encourage the additional use of water, we have to possibly consider additional capacity upsizing, things of that nature. And of course, if we end up going in that direction, I would, I would request that we reconsider our rate structure on the water side. And of course, if we're gonna be losing revenue on the sewer side, we'd have to reevaluate that as well. Another option is to reduce the impact fee on irrigation meters. And the idea there would make it more affordable for people to, to purchase an irrigation meter. Return on investment would be better for the customer. Similar challenges, you're gonna, it's potential to encourage the use of irrigation water, thereby potentially driving size of pipes and things of that nature. The actual cost of an installation of an irrigation meter is approximately $1,600 for a three-quarter inch meter. The way that we currently charge for that is an installation fee. The, the standard installation fee is $756, but you also add an impact fee on that of $3,150. So it's just shy of $4,000 for someone to come in and buy a three-quarter inch irrigation There's some other numbers in here as well, just to give you some references to what it costs for water, or water impact fees, et cetera. Again, it does encourage the use of, of potable water for irrigation. And, and again, I would, I would request that we would consider looking at the sanitary sewer, the impacts to the sanitary sewer and water rates, should we choose to go in this direction. So what we'd like from you all this evening is to see if you have any immediate feedback and if you want us to explore one of the options that we currently aren't using, more in-depth and bring it back to this body.
Which one are you using now?
So right now, we have, we, we provide irrigation water through the domestic meter. So they get charged water and sanitary sewer based on that meter usage. And then they have that option of purchasing an irrigation meter.
But actually, with $4,000, you'll have to figure out.
You have to figure out if it's worth it.
Exactly.
Right.
Is it worth it?
Yeah, in some instances, if you're a high irrigation user, it's, it's absolutely worth it. If you're, if you're, you know, you barely use, you barely use irrigation water, it's certainly not worth it, at least. Your, your return on that investment will take probably many years to recover. So that's the, that's the challenge.
The other option is...
Stay where we are.
Stay where we're at.
Right.
So, I'm gonna suggest that the board, you know, you've done a nice presentation, got good information now, and let, let them kind of think about that and we'll bring this back on another occasion, if that's okay. Is there any specific question you need to clarify?
Why are you, why are you wanting to change from where we are?
Well, we, this...
The fairness thing or something?
Yeah, this, this came from a handful of residents who have expressed concern about, you know, the equitability of, of how we provide irrigation water.
High users or low users or low users?
Yeah, low, probably the lower user in the irrigation world. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the last item is a draft Resolution 2018-01 awarding the construction contract to Keywet Infrastructure South Company in the amount of $132,380, $132,380.
That was 32 million.
That's a big number, $132,380,000 for the Water Reclamation Facility Modifications Expansion Project.
This is the big one.
This is the big one.
Yeah, I feel like this is probably the largest expenditure ever. I don't think, we all kind of have been waiting for this, but I think we need to give a little bit more love.
Well, I think, let, let them explain it. It's, it's not on the voting session yet. These are the bids that came in, remember, had 150 million plus, and so now we've...
We, in anticipation of maybe not having enough time this evening, it's also in the Capital Investment Committee meeting this Thursday, so there, yeah, hopefully you'll be able to make it, if you wish.
Four o'clock, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Have y'all finished the evaluation of the bids and verification and everything? So, it appears that this is who you will pick?
That's what, who, that's who we are recommending for bid award. Yes, sir.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll catch it at the Capital Investment and, when do you anticipate we'll vote on this?
We're, we are looking to bring it back July to, to vote. So we can certainly put it on the work session in July if we have the opportunity. Yes, we do. For, I'm just making sure with Linnea, so.
We're only meeting once in July.
Yes, sir.
Which, which day?
July 10th.
10th?
10th.
Oh, good, I'll be straight back.
You're being in a good mood. Okay.
No, the opposite. No, I'll have to put on shoes and that.
Okay, well, we'll get a Capital Projects Committee, have it on the work session.
Yes, sir.
So we'll see you back about five after seven.
Thank you.